Howdy, everybody. Today is Tuesday, September 24th, and the time is 7:30 PM. We're here for the regular session of the Capel City Council. We do have a quorum present. And in addition to the quorum present here, we also have Councilmember Prem Kamar will be joining us on Zoom. So I'm calling the meeting to order. We'll hold an executive session at the end, and work session at the end of this meeting, which is a bit of a change in our normal procedure, but we will get through the regular meeting. As a reminder, any persons wishing to speak during our citizens' appearance must sign the appropriate register located outside the council chambers and list your residence address. Tonight, we're blessed to have Ryan Paulson with the Church of Jesus Christ of Later Day Saints to give our invocation, at which time, after that, we will recite the Pledge of Allegiance, so please remain standing. Ryan?
Our Father in Heaven, we are grateful for the privilege of being here tonight. We thank thee for the freedoms that we enjoy, for the privilege of living in this beautiful city. We give thee thanks for these men and women, for their commitment to civic service. We pray that thou wouldst bless them and bless their families. We pray for wisdom and guidance to be with all those who will participate in the meeting tonight, that decisions can be made and directions taken that will bless every member of this community. We pray for thy blessings to continue to be with those members, especially our children and youth, that they may continue to learn and grow and thrive, and that this can be a community that fosters such growth and development. We give thee thanks for thy love and blessings, and we offer this prayer in the sacred name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. So item number four on our agenda is a proclamation, and I am very excited to have our guest of honor with us tonight. I'd like to invite Chiaka Obagou and her family and friends and neighbors and anybody else that would like to join us down front to please join me down in the front. support of women's volleyball, earning the title of Olympic champion not once but twice through unparalleled skill and unwavering commitment to excellence. And whereas Chiaka has been a member of the history-making U.S. Women's National Volleyball Team since 2018, and whereas in 2021, the U.S. Women's National Volleyball Team won their first Olympic gold medal in Tokyo, and whereas in 2024, she was named Best Middle Blocker at the 2024 Paris Olympics, where her team went on to win the silver medal. And whereas Chiaka has exemplified the spirit of sportsmanship, inspiring athletes and fans alike with her and her team's remarkable achievements on the world stage, and whereas the remarkable victories of the U.S. Women's National Volleyball Team have brought immense pride and honor to Chiaka's hometown of Capel and the nation. And whereas Chiaka has not only excelled her athletic career, but has made significant contributions to development and promotion of volleyball, and has also modeled for Ralph Lauren and Milani cosmetics. Now therefore, I, Wes Mays, Mayor of the City of Capel, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, September 24, 2024, as Chiaka Obagou Day. And in recognition of her outstanding achievements and contributions, let it be known that we honor and celebrate Chiaka for her extraordinary accomplishments as a two-time Olympic champion, and express our deepest appreciation for the pride she has brought Capel and our community. In witness thereof, I've set my hand and caused the seal of Capel to be affixed this 24th day of September, 2024. Thank you very much. Now, I will hand this to you.
Thank you so much.
And I've got a little something for you to do in just a moment. Counsel, does anybody have anything they would like to say? Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, thank you for joining us here today. We're so excited to be able to honor you and give you, I don't even know if you need much more recognition from how you have represented our community so well. Thank you for all you've given our community, our state, our country. I know how hard you must have worked, and you do it with such grace and poise, and you're such an amazing example for so many young people, especially our young ladies in our community. So thank you for all of you do. You're awesome, and we just love having you, and we love having you here representing Capel, so thank you very much.
Counselmember Matthew?
Thank you, Mayor. Welcome with the family here today. Thank you for being here. Congratulations. We are proud of you, having two Olympics medals, you know, after, I mean, you have it now, and we are very proud of you. It's good to see you again. Thank you.
Counselmember Hina Jose Smith?
I think I'll just echo what everyone said, but thank you to you and to your family, because I know that it's, they probably don't always get to see you often, since you're traveling a lot, but, you know, thank you for, you know, everything that they do, and thank you for everything that you do to just represent our community and our country. And as Councilmember or Mayor Protem Neville said, you do it with such grace and poise, and we just really appreciate it. We're really glad that you took the time out of your really busy schedule to be here and just letting us celebrate you, because this is just a huge accomplishment. And just know that we were all watching you, and we'll continue to watch you and celebrate you and support you and all that you need, so thank you.
Do you have anything you'd like to say?
Of course. Well, first, thank you, Mayor Mays, for having me and the rest of the council members. Like she just said, thank you to my family and friends. It's been a very long journey, and they often don't get to see me, but the support I felt from them, and then also the City of Capel, has been extremely humbling. I think I counted at least, outside of my parents', eight Capel members in Paris, which I think is wild. Yeah, there is my friend here, Courtney, and her mom was there, my Aunt Tochi was there, and then four other people I went to high school with. So that just goes to show the support that I've received from this community from kindergarten has just been amazing, and again, extremely humbling. So thank you all for your support, near and far. I really appreciate it.
Now, I do have a Sharpie here, and she said she knows how to use one. And I didn't realize there were so many different types of volleyballs. But I did look up, and the U.S. Olympics Women Team used a Makasa volleyball. Now, I probably didn't find exactly what you guys got to use, but I got as close as I could. So if I could get your signature, we're going to place this in the cabinet outside in the lobby. And I can say this is the first time I've ever been within two feet of an Olympic medal, so that's also a first for me. So thank you very much. Wow, thank you very much. Really appreciate it.
Mayor, do you guys want to come in front of this podium, and then we can hold the ball?
Just got to slide in.
Do you want me to take it on your phone? Absolutely.
Thank you.
My daughter's going to find this hilarious.
Oh, wait, 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 wait. One more, one more.
All right, thanks very much.
I didn't even get to talk about how you took your signature home.
Persons wishing to speak must sign the register and list your address. Presentations by individuals shall be limited to two minutes each. An individual's speaker time may be extended for an additional two minutes with the approval of the majority of the council members present. Person signed up to speak will be called in the order that they signed up. No personal attacks. Any speakers should be made against any member of the council, the mayor, individual, group, or corporation. There will be no comments or deliberations from the City Council due to the Texas Open Meetings Act. Once the timer sounds at two minutes, the city secretary will break in and make the request of the mayor and the council if they would like to extend the speaker's time. Tonight, we do have one person who's signed up to speak, and that's Mr. Thomas Burrows.
My son, one of my son's hockey coaches was on the 1992 team and showed us all the Olympic, his medal. So I don't see the thing going here. I don't see it in front of me, so. Well, it's just like the application for the board that I made that kept being rejected. And then finally, I was told that, oh, your application has been accepted, except it's strange, it's not my information that I put there. So I'm sure that when it would get rejected, as usual, that that's a good reason why, because it didn't have my information. I do appreciate one of the council members cutting down the tree as it comes into my neighborhood. It looked a little, the dead tree. Again, my wife, they got lost with the EMS thing, because you'd think that that'd be one of those things they had learned, is how to get from some place in Capel and get to a hospital without driving into the DFW Airport. Again, I don't understand why the lights on Sandy Lake, two blocks of them, are not working. It's been turned in for three weeks. I mean, it is like safety, you know, here, Capel lights on the bridges on Denton Tap and Sandy Lake. We've got busted-out lights there and trees growing in front of them. I don't know, folks, it's basic safety, you know? When somebody gets killed because of this, they're going to sue you, you know, Thomas J. Henry and all that stuff. And why does the Methodist church not have to mow their yard? Makes wonders to me, you know? So I'll be back next time to talk about the EMS thing again, until we find out that that's been properly trained.
Thank you for your comments. Item number six is our consent agenda. The consent agenda is routine in nature and is generally enacted in one motion. These items have been previously approved through the budget or past council action. Any item may be pulled and considered separately. Full descriptions are available on the screen. We do have items A through M, and I would like to request that we pull item I, as there has been a minor change to it, and I would like to have Mr. Hager represent that. Councilmembers considering items A through M less I at this point. Is there any item you'd like to have pulled or have any questions over? Seeing none, I will take a motion. Counselmember Carroll?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the consent agenda, item number six, A through H and J through M.
Thank you, seconded by Councilmember Walker. All in favor?
Walker, Hina Jose Smith, Carolyn Neville's, Matthew Hill, in favor, none opposed, the motion carries.
Thank you very much. Consent agenda item 6I is consider approval in interlocal agreement with Dallas College to facilitate growing in cultural ability and learning sessions for all city employees in the amount of $48,000. It's budgeted in the general fund, Employee Experience Department, and authorizing the mayor to sign. Mr. Hager?
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. This morning, I received a notice from our staff that there was an issue with paragraph 24 of the agreement, which is a provision in the interlocal agreement that's required by law that any expenditures from a city or municipality or other governmental entity for goods and services, which we provided services by the community college, has to be paid for by funds currently available and budgeted. That clause provides for that. They objected to the language. I made a small change, which you have at your seat. It does not change the substance of the agreement, the services rendered or the payment. It's just kind of a glitch that we're required by law to have that language in the agreement, and I made the change for the community college, and we would ask you go ahead and approve this agreement as presented to you with the change in paragraph 24.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Mr. Hager? Mayor Protem Neville's?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Hager, a quick question. If we are to approve this amended document that you provided us, do we need to note anything specific in our motion, or do we just say as presented?
I would go ahead and just do it as amended.
As amended. All right, thank you, sir.
Mayor Protem Neville's?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve consent agenda, item 6I, as amended.
Thank you. Seconded by Mayor, Councilmember Hina Jose Smith. I will get it right someday. I'm sorry. All in favor?
Walker, Hina Jose Smith, Carolyn Neville's, Matthew Hill, in favor, none opposed, the motion carries.
Thank you very much. Item number seven is consider voting for a candidate for places 11 through 14 to the Board of Trustees of the Texas Municipal League Intergovernmental Risk Pool, and authorizing the mayor to sign and complete the ballot. Mr. Collins, I think you had a few things you were going to say. We did select Mr. Land or nominate him for the ballot, so this is the formal process, as I understand it?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor, Counsel. Just a brief introduction on this item. The Risk Pool was created in 1973. It serves approximately 2,800 governmental agencies or entities throughout the state of Texas, and they primarily provide service in the areas of workers' compensation, liability, property, and cyber coverage for cities. The City of Capel first became a member of the Risk Pool in 1977 for liability and for workers' compensation, added liability and property in 1986, and cyber liability in 2016. As the mayor mentioned, on July 23rd, City Council approved a resolution of support nominating city manager Mike Land for place 14 on the Risk Pool Board of Trustees. And this item is to formally recommend electing Mr. Land to the board in place 14. In addition, this item recommends three other nominees for places 11, 12, and 13, and those nominees are Randy Criswell with the city, he's the city manager of Woolforth, to place 11, Allison Hayward, council member for City of Shirts, to place 12, and Harland Jefferson, deputy city manager for the City of Burlison, to place 13. I will note, the item specifically recommends Mr. Land, and it's really the council's pleasure, whether you want to vote for the other three individuals, for the other three places, or if you want to vote for someone else that's not recommended here. The background of each of the nominees or candidates was included in the packet. And that concludes my remarks.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Prem Kamar and I had the privilege of meeting Councilmember Allison Hayward at the TML District 13 meeting last week. She is the incoming president for TML. Very impressive lady, spoke well, enjoyed her talk. So Counsel, what's the, Councilmember Walker?
So I noticed that Mike's not here. Does he know we're nominating him for this?
Well, that's one of the, that's one of the risks of not being here.
There you go. No, I'm just being silly. Thank you.
Mayor Protem?
I'm going to stab at a serious question here. So was there any particular criteria for the recommendations that were provided? I noticed, I believe all three were the incumbents, if I'm not mistaken, you know, looking over that. So any particular reason why those were recommended?
They are the incumbents, have demonstrated, you know, good service to the board.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
I'll be, I can accept a motion at any time. Councilmember Walker?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve that we accept Mike Land, or we nominate Mike Land for the position, and the other three nominees as well.
Thank you. I have a second from Mayor Protem Neville's. All in favor?
Walker, Hina Jose Smith, Carolyn Neville's, Matthew Hill, in favor, none opposed, the motion carries.
Thank you very much. Item number eight is our city manager reports with project updates, future addendums, and direction from work session. Well, we haven't had work session yet, so we'll do that one later.
Yes, sir. No report this evening.
All right. Item number nine is mayor and council reports on recent and upcoming events. Just as a reminder, our National Night Out is one week away from tonight. It will be October 1st. I thought it was a week after that. It is October the 8th.
October 1st. I just came to the meeting, National Night Out.
It is.
Yes, sir.
I thought it was, I thought it was a Tuesday before TML.
It is.
You usually don't say the week of TML.
Yeah. Okay. Sorry, a little confusion. National Night Out is October 1st, which is a week from tonight. This is a community-building campaign that promotes police-community partnerships. Check out the location map on the block parties in Capel, and special thank you to our 2024 sponsors. I apologize, because we have a council meeting on the 8th. Yes, this is, it is a different week, with October 1st falling on a Tuesday. As I mentioned briefly, Councilmember Prem Kamar and I attended the TML District 13 Annual Meeting down in Duncanville last Thursday night. It was, we had the privilege of listening to former mayor of Fort Worth, Betsy Price, speak, and she, as always, was very deliberate in her words, not mincing anything and admonishing everyone to give their best in their public service. So I certainly enjoyed listening to her speak. Do we have any other items from the council? Seeing none? Number 10 is public service announcements concerning items of community interest with no council action or deliberation. Mayor Protem Neville's?
Mayor, I did want to report a very serious matter of the official mayor's grape stump at Grape Fest. Councilmember Prem Kamar and I faithfully represented the City of Capel. We did not take home the grand prize of most juice produced, so I failed you, and, you know, we failed you in that regard, but we did win the most likely-to-go-viral category as the fan favorite. So I felt like that was great prestige for our City of Capel, so did want to make sure that, and I'll be presenting you with our certificate later in the evening, sir. So thank you for choosing us to represent the City of Capel. Appreciate you.
Thank you for filling in as I was out of town, so appreciate that. Councilmember Carroll, did you have anything you'd like to announce?
I did not.
I see a trophy sitting there in front of you.
I was voted the best Larry for 2024.
Whoa!
Come out to homecoming Friday night to see the best Larry of 2024. Well, actually, I was voted this by one person. I guess my daughter voted me this, so there you go.
Is that a participation trophy?
No, this is serious. Come out to homecoming. Homecoming's this week. All right. The parade's tomorrow night, yes, and then the game is Friday night.
Oh, the parade's closed.
For National Night Out?
It did not. I didn't have anything there for it.
There's homecoming tomorrow, there's a parade, and I think Parkway is going to be closed. And I thought I saw from like 5:00 to 7:00 or something along that line, so.
I think 5:30 to 7:00, something like that.
Right, thank you very much. All right, the time is 7:56 PM. We are recessing from the regular session. We will move into executive session in the first-floor conference room. After executive session is complete, I'll come back out and announce that we're going into work session, at which time the public will be invited and welcome to join us. So we will be back shortly. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. The time is 9:22, and we adjourn from executive session or moving into work session. The work session is open to the public and will be held in the first-floor conference room starting at approximately 9:25. The time is 9:36 PM. I did not know that tonight was going to be long. I will defer item A to a future work session, if that's okay with everyone.
I'm happy to have the discussion. You want people in a better mood for it?
Yeah. I'm willing to defer A to a future session.
You're welcome to go through.
I'm very intrigued.
I'm very intrigued, so.
Okay.
Yeah, me too. Let's do it.
Let's do it. Come on.
So, this, this is a list of comparisons.
I've got the answer for this one.
Me too.
Okay, then what is it? Let's just.
Three, three minutes.
Sync up with Capel ISD or the City of McKinney?
Oh, no, no, no. Oh, my God. There's the answer, it's clear.
Actually, that's what I wrote, Don.
City of McKinney?
Yeah.
Well, I like the idea of syncing with Capel, with the ISD, just 'cause.
Second.
And I like theirs, but if not that, the McKinney one.
So, what I, what I was gonna propose was three minutes per speaker.
Yep.
No addition, and you allow me to limit the time if we have more than eight speakers.
Yes.
And we guarantee every speaker one minute.
Yep.
I love it.
Sounds good.
I totally disagree.
Okay. How come?
People have a right to speak their mind, and she be given time. And I remember when I came to council in 2014, and they, we had, what, at least 100 people here, and we were limited on time. It was infuriating, so.
So, what's your, what's your proposal?
If it ain't broke, don't fix it.
Well, it is broken, because when we get a, when we get a speaker and I ask for whether, whether you guys want to do an extension of time, it's really the extension of time that I'm after, not the speaking time itself. When I ask for an extension of time and I get a duck head and looking the other way, no one voting on it or telling me which way to go, I don't have direction to head. That's what I'm really, that's what I need fixed.
Oh, you shake my head, yeah.
Well, I appreciate it, but not everybody does. Brianna?
Hey, so I, I hear you, Mark, 'cause I, that's why I usually just say yes, even in, I know we sometimes have speakers who are up there for different reasons, right? And sometimes it has nothing to do with the community, sometimes it does, but I, I believe in people being heard. I also know that, one, people can also email us, so we also have the email opportunity where they will send a letter, right? Or just, I guess all I have to say is there's different avenues other than just the being heard, and, or as far as coming into the meeting. So, I guess that's why I feel like if we limit it to, not limit it, but if we put time guardrails around it for three minutes, for example, then we're also setting expectations for the person who's speaking to come prepared with what they want to say in that time period, rather than we just continue to say, yes, two more minutes, two more minutes, two more minutes, because I think people also should come with prepared comments if they're going to say something to us, right? So, I don't know. I, I hear your point, but I also do like the fact of, like you said, Mayor, where you're not having to get, go around and get thumbs up from everyone, because sometimes people give you an answer and sometimes they don't. So, yeah. Not done.
Okay. So, the only, the only thing I have a concern about is I feel like there's two different kinds of speakers. One speaks, and we have asked for more time, no, just want to give. One speaks, and we give extra time. So, we're making a value judgment, it's a public value judgment on the speech. I'd rather give everybody four minutes and not have any, you know, value judgment or vote, or just, you know, because you're right, and the state law's really clear. We're supposed to allow them a chance to come and say whatever they want to say, anything they want to talk about, for a period of time. So, I think three minutes is enough, personally. A lot of people don't ask for more time, so they wouldn't necessarily need the three minutes. Some people do, and then they don't necessarily use all the extra. So, to me, three minutes is a reasonable, single, set, you know, you get to talk for three minutes. But I would like to get rid of the awkwardness.
Yeah, I do.
Of passing judgment on the speaker, or, you know, something like that.
I absolutely agree.
And that was what my intent was. I don't, I don't care what the time is. Well, I do, but I'm not gonna, I don't really care, and I think it's a good idea to set a cumulative total, but I understand Mark's point, and I can, I can completely understand it. Bijou?
Yeah, I believe we should give every citizen opportunity to speak. Not many people come and speak here, and if they are willing to take time off from their busy schedule and show up at the city council, we cannot deny anybody an opportunity to speak to us. If we can limit four minutes, that's fine, but we should be hearing every single person. And when we get emails, we may not respond to them, so they think it's going to a black hole. And I'm sure some of, some of the emails are responded by staff. That's good, that they're gonna respond. But if anybody shows up to city councils and want to speak to the city council on any matter, they should be allowed.
I could just, I will tell you that every email that comes in addressed to all of us, I make sure that a response is sent out by the staff.
Excellent.
So, I do, I do, now, I can't, if it goes to the city council address, I absolutely ensure that we get an official answer from the staff.
Excellent.
So, but, okay, Brianna?
Yeah, for clarification, I'm not saying that one takes place, one takes the place of the other. I think you're right, absolutely, everyone should be heard, and I appreciate when people come and speak, because it may be, regardless of what they want to say, right, like, they should be heard, and there may be things that we just don't even know about. I think what I was saying is if, for whatever reason, whatever that time limit is that we provide, two, three, four minutes isn't enough, we also have the opportunity, right, where people can't email us. I read everyone's emails. I know staff responds to it. We can't respond, even if they came in person. I think I was just basically saying that we, if four minutes isn't enough for somebody, rather than the awkwardness of yes, no, do we give them more time, right? It's, you also have other avenues of communicating with us. But I do think that everyone should be heard, and we should give people the opportunity to, to come in.
Ravesh?
Thank you, Mayor. I was under the impression that only one more two-minute extension was allowed, and if that is true, I kind of agree with Mark, you know, the time system, I think, works well, and if, if we as city council members need to be better at giving you a positive thumbs up or down, I think we can change ourselves and do that.
I, I really want to get away from the heads up, the thumbs up, thumbs down. I think to Jim's point, it's almost giving a, a, a.
Value judgment.
Thank you for the word value judgment on that. And I think that's.
It doesn't serve a purpose.
No. And, and believe me, it's, for me, it's very uncomfortable when I'm not getting a clear direction from the council.
Right.
I'm sorry, we had three hands go up at once. Mark?
You know, I, I agree with Jim. I mean, for us to make a value judgment on whether or not we want to hear what the person has to say, they should be able to continue your thought, and I'm all for four minutes, and just be done with it. Because it, it takes a lot to fill up four minutes. I mean, you, you have to have a lot prepared. Now, I know some people can ramble, but, you know, if it's an extra four minutes out of my life, I feel obligated to the citizens to hear their thoughts.
Kevin?
Jim, 100% agree with your statement as well. I thought that was very, very well stated. So, I appreciate the wisdom and the words you just shared. I, I like the idea of kind of what, what Don said about going with kind of what Capel ISD, and Mayor, I do want to thank you for putting together this list of.
Yeah.
Kind of our surround, oh.
Actually, that was Ashley.
Ashley, I want to thank you so much for putting this list together, so, because one thing I do like about the Capel ISD, I like, like, I understand that, you know, Capel, you know, parts of Capel are in different school districts, and, you know, the parts of other districts go to Capel, but I like the idea of it being consistent, so it's not confusing to our citizens. They know that for a majority of most people, if you live in Capel ISD or the City of Capel, I think that consistency would be, would be good. I also think that there are some citizens, even though, like, even though, Mayor, you, you read it every time, I know a, a lot of people are probably so focused on, and they're nervous about getting up there, about what they're gonna say, they might, or they may not understand how to ask for the additional two minutes on that. So, the idea of, of getting rid of the, the ask is, is huge for me. I like the three minutes, because it automatically, if you look at it, it automatically grants another minute if you are unsure how to ask for that additional time and things like that, but it does, I think that, we could get stuck on three minutes or four minutes, but I think three minutes is plenty of time to be able to articulate an idea, be able to express that. I just, I don't see a huge difference between three and four minutes. And then, I will say, I've seen very creative ways, like people speaking to our school district, they use like, like chain speaking almost, where they write up a word, and, you know, three people sign up, and it takes them, you know, a couple, you know, a couple people to get through that, but our citizens are smart. I think they'd be able to, you know, if there was an issue to come up, like you said, 100 people show up, I think they'd be creative to be able to, you know, get their ideas across on that. So, I like the three minutes, I like automatically granting an additional minute, and I, I like just being consistent with the school, with Capel ISD, so.
Sorry, I don't understand the additional minute part.
No, he meant from the existing two minutes.
Oh, okay, okay.
And the existing two minutes, it's like, it's, we're automatically like, hey, here's another minute, versus trying to ask and articulate.
Gotcha, thank you.
So, but I, I do hear all of y'alls, and I do agree, everyone should be able to express their thoughts.
I know a lot of times when we want to get a large number of speakers on one item, they'll have some spokespersons who will speak fully on the item, and then people will just get up and say, hey, I, I agree with the previous speaker on everything he said, and they're done. And so, you know, when we, you know, limiting it to 15 in number.
What's not limited?
The limiting limit, the time.
So, what it is, when it reaches that number.
Yeah.
It basically just says.
You can adjust it.
That they can adjust it to accommodate more people to be able to speak in a timely manner. You got Brianna's.
Oh, Brianna?
So, the problem with that, because I, I do understand it, and I think it makes things a lot more efficient. And I think maybe, Mark, to your point earlier, is if we do something like that, and we, after 15, 20 speakers, and everybody only gets a minute, right, versus the original three minutes, then it's, right, it's like, who gets, who gets their first to be able to get those three minutes, versus, right?
No, I think you would change it from the beginning.
Yeah.
What's, yeah.
You would change it for everybody.
Yeah, you change it for everybody.
Oh, everybody gets then a minute, because there's over 15 people.
Yeah.
He would be able to say everybody gets 90 seconds, or.
Gotcha, and I.
Yeah.
Well, my concern with that, then, is because, I mean, I, I, I don't want to go, like, for, as long as I can remember, we've been two minutes, right? And so, and then extending an additional two, so I don't know that I would want to go back to, like, if you have, you know, over 15 people, then everybody only gets one minute, and people are coming prepared for, you know, two minutes. I do like the three minutes, and if we're gonna do the three minutes, then I would like the three minutes then for everybody, so that everybody has the same amount of time, and they can adjust accordingly, right? Like, I don't know who said this, but usually, I think you just said it, Kevin, was, usually some people would say, I agree with the presenter before, right, and so I have no, oh, Mark, sorry, and I, you know, no additional comments to say. Three minutes, four minutes, I just think for. Three minutes, four minutes, I just think for some people, if you give them four minutes, they will find a way to take the four minutes. Yes.
I'm your guy.
And so, um, I think in three minutes, you can communicate, articulate, share what you're trying to share with us.
Jim?
So I, look, I, I kind of feel like we, you know, we signed up for this, so if, I, I think the three minutes is enough. I just had a closing argument, you know, in front of a jury, and they only gave me five minutes, so, um, you can get a lot done in, in three minutes, but I don't, I, I mean, I kind of feel like, look, I'm here, if, if there are twenty people want to talk for three minutes each, and they each have something to say or not, it's an hour. It's not, you know, we're not here at midnight, and Speaker eleven hundred is gonna get up. And then, and I really pray that, well, they were having issues or that ever happens. Uh, but for the most part, pickleball's been the most, well, and I think those folks would have metered out their time and, and, and appointed a spokesman, but I'm content with saying three minutes, and everybody that signs up gets three minutes. No matter, if they're all here on one topic, then we'll hear a lot about that topic.
Kevin?
I will say that, um, I do, I do, you know, kind of like modeling to see what the, uh, Capella, uh, I C board trustees have done, is what they do is, uh, because there was a concern about, like, you know, you've prepared your arguments and stuff. I know they come out well in advance, and they tell everyone, we've got, you know, very recently, there's been a lot of speakers signing up. We've got eighty people signed up, we're gonna adjust it to a minute and a half or a minute, and it allows people to, you know, I guess, fine tune their, their, their words. So it's not just like, hey, you know, uh, you get up there, now you only have one minute to speak. So they, you know, they do provide the courtesy to be able to, uh, you know, get people to get to the, the root of their, you know, the point that they're trying to make, you know, get their idea across. So it's not just like something they surprise, you know, like, surprise on people and stuff, so. Again, I, I agree, I think that the three minutes is fine, and, and look, I would be okay with, um, you know, if, if we, if we choose not to, you know, adjust the time, I would be okay with just trying the three minutes. I think the heart of the argument, though, is the awkward, do I have, you know, do they get the two minutes? So that, I would, whatever we do, I would just love to cut that out, and I'd love to go with the three minutes and then cutting that out, and I think that would be a great solution, and then maybe we could adjust it further if we need to, when the pickleballers come out to get you.
You know, we've never had more than eight speakers in the last three years, so it is, it, it really had no, an issue, so.
Even for pickleball?
Huh?
Even for pickleball?
Even they opted for spokespersons.
Okay, or even?
I'm sorry, Bijou?
Yeah, so, when did we implement this policy? Two minutes for each person, twenty minutes maximum for one topic?
It's been like that for years.
A long time ago.
It's an ordinance, not a law. Yeah.
Okay.
It, it's, it's.
So we have to make an adjustment, we have to change the ordinance?
No, it's not, actually not an ordinance, it is an ordinance, yes, we'll have to vote on it.
Yes.
This will, this will come back before you for a formal vote.
Right. If we choose to.
I have to amend a code, it has to be amended in the code book.
Okay, yeah, so.
You, you could repeal this and adopt a, a rule of procedure to govern this as well, but we've always done this.
So in fact, when I got started down this, I thought it was actually part of the charter, because I was misreading it, which would have meant we would have had to do a referendum vote, and I said, no. But then Bob pointed out it was just an ordinance that we can't amend.
To Bob's point, I, I'd like to keep it an ordinance, just because I think that we need to, I think it, you know.
I, I, I'm not.
I know, I know procedure, we, we'd love to discuss it.
Some do it just procedurally, and so they have the certain annual.
I'd like to, I'd like to.
Now, this, this has been in the books for a long time.
Yeah.
So, I'm, I'm hearing three minutes from most everybody, I think. Mark, you're four.
Four.
Did we have any other?
Yeah, I'm probably four.
I've got, Ramesh, where do you stand? Three?
I'm three.
Three, 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 okay. So you guys will have a chance to vote on it and make amendments, but let's get, I, I need something to bring back to you. So we will have the three-minute proposal in there. Uh, we will remove this section that says an individual speaker time will be extended, that will be deleted. And then cumulative time, do we not want to address that at all?
So you will take that out?
Yeah.
Twenty minutes will be taken out? If we approve three?
Hang on a minute, one question at a time, please.
Sorry, do you have the proposed that you could pass out to us?
Uh, yeah, but, no, because I'm.
You're gonna mark it up?
We're marking it up.
Got it, got it.
I'm sorry, Bijou?
So the question is, if we go forward with three minutes per person.
Right.
The twenty minutes cumulative will remove?
Well, that's up to us, that's what I'm asking.
The people agreed for three minutes, what's their opinion?
Right.
Well, that's what I was gonna ask you.
And it do, it doesn't have to be twenty minutes, it can be forty-five minutes, which would give you fifteen speakers.
So, quick question.
Brianna?
On the twenty, that's twenty minutes cumulative for topic, right?
That's what it said.
Okay, I would say then, I say we take out the cumulative, and just, if, if we're gonna say everybody has a right to speak, everybody gets three minutes, I'm gonna let y'all know right now that while you haven't had more than eight speakers, there have been times we have had a lot of speakers, too, and rightfully so, right? We have had some hot topics at Capella, so if, if the, if the consensus or the, where we're landing is we want to make sure everybody is heard, then I just want to be careful with putting the cumulative time, because, um, I would rather than we do three minutes and have everybody heard.
Just for three hours?
You know what, Bob, there's some topic, no, I know, and I hear you, and you know what? I have had, I have had plenty of one a.m.
I hear it by the hours, that's great.
I hear you.
Exactly, I just said he gets paid money after, so it's fine.
Yeah, so do I, I mean, so, what I'm saying, and Bob, by all, and, and I'm just being funny with you, but with all due respect, like, we've been here sometimes one, two in the morning, there are some topics that our citizens are very passionate about. It's also, um, far and few between, right? It doesn't happen very often, and so when it does, let's hear everybody.
Okay, so.
You know, if that's the case, we had multiple occasions with the more than one topic, twenty minutes? To be here until one o'clock or two o'clock?
Yeah, but they just ignored it.
Say that again?
The, the, no one enforced the twenty-minute cumulative rule?
Ah.
On the other.
Okay.
Oh, yes, 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 we did not, we just let everybody speak. I think that was probably one of the ones when you came, that we think we went over twenty minutes. Bicycle, Cypress Waters, like, we've had.
That makes sense.
Yeah, Red Hawk.
How long do you stay?
Bicycle, horse.
Oh, yeah, I, I have many.
Mixed use development?
Mixed use.
Don?
So to address this issue, because at the moment, we do limit how many people can speak, technically, right, by ordinance? And this doesn't say per topic, this says per, per sess, per session.
Yes, it's not per topic.
So, I'd go back to C I S Ds, the way, the way they do theirs, because they let everyone speak. They just, for efficiency purposes, instead of spending four hours for eighty people, they end up spending ninety minutes for, for people, for eighty people and everything. So it lets everyone speak, but it just, when it, when the need arises, it gives some parameter on how long they can speak. So I still think that's a, it gets rid of the limit, it gets rid of the, how many people can talk, right? Because that's like what, what we have now. So I guess I'm still sort of in favor of that type of, if you have a, if, well, they had eighty people the other night, right?
Mm-hmm.
So that'd been two hundred and forty minutes. You know, four hours you'd be up here, so at least that allows you to fine tune that a little bit, and, you know, let everybody say their piece, but not be up here for four hours, be up here for two hours to do it.
The only, my only concern is your meeting could get hijacked, if you're okay with it, that's fine.
On which?
I, I've recently been to a meeting, and people showed up, they were mad, they, they didn't like anybody, they didn't like me, they didn't like the mayor, they didn't like the rest of council, and they just sent people down there and talked nonsense for four hours. And they hijack the meeting, the council got frustrated and ended the meeting, they got up and left. I don't, I'm just saying that, that, that's an extreme case, is that gonna happen here? Probably not, but.
Well, if we get through that, then, then we can change it.
What are you gonna leave?
I had, the way I had, the way I had worded it, it gave the mayor the latitude to limit the time per person if he chose to. Didn't say he had to.
I, I agree with that also, that if we wanted to let, if there were twenty people that signed up, and you wanted to give them a full three minutes, you let them all speak.
So the way I had it, I said if eight or more members of the public are present to speak, which would have been twenty-one minutes, we could go ten or fifteen, it doesn't matter, the mayor may uniformly reduce each speaker's term, so everyone is, is given the same amount of time.
It's not first, got first, or.
To ensure meeting efficiency.
Yeah.
In no event will a speaker be given less than one minute to address the council.
Quick question, for clarification, so that twenty minutes is total for all speakers, even if every speaker has a different topic? It's not per pop topic?
That's correct, that's where, that's where our stuff is written.
Have we, did we enforce the twenty minutes?
No, never had to.
Okay, that's.
No, see, it, but you don't want to get into that thing where, you know, you know, where someone like Thomas gets up and talks for twenty minutes and hijacks the meeting, and you have to listen to that, and, you know, that, that's fine, that's his God-given constitutional right, I understand, but I, I just don't want your meeting to get hijacked, he's enjoying your proper business.
But we are seeing one person can't really speak for four minutes.
I understand. You could bring friends, yeah, you could bring a friend.
Oh, you could bring, so, the other thing I want to think about, I, you know what, I don't have.
You got, you could have a fail safe.
And I think that's a really good point, and let's.
You could have a fail safe, if he can think about what the fail safe is, because what Mark suggested, when he talked about mixed use, and everybody in town showed up, that's an important issue for y'all, you shouldn't hear that.
Right.
But we weren't heard.
No, I remember that.
They were limited to the time.
I remember that.
I, I remember that vote, oh, you were heard. I remember that, though, you were heard.
But that's what we're talking about, you just said of it, was that limit, though.
Right.
Yeah, but we should have heard. That's the Mark form, something that was that important to the community, where that many people showed up on a zoning case, a zoning issue, that's a public hearing, that, that, we're not talking about a public hearing.
Right.
You've been in these shoes too, Wes, that's how we met you, so, and all, with all due respect, it was the same thing, right? That was a big issue with that church, becoming a school.
This rule really spawns people running for council.
Mark? Wes? So, you know, I will tell you that I did stand and measure my address to make sure that I fit the two minutes. And, you know, to your point, I, I was made damn sure I was prepared, I'm sorry, Kevin, you?
Uh, well, you know, what if we did something like this? So the fail safe that you're talking about, if, okay, so we've got, uh, three minutes, all right, uh, twenty people, you've got an hour, right? So you will, we would allow to, we've never even come close to that in the three years since I've been on council. What if we said that, um, if, you know, there are more than twenty speakers, uh, either mayor or council, I'll throw it out there, takes a vote to, uh, to go past that, that one hour mark? You know, so our meeting doesn't get hijacked, I mean, you know, it's.
Well, and, and you get.
Just throwing something out there.
You know, this, what the Republican, the open meetings act talks about, prior to the time the council takes action on any item, we're supposed to hear from the citizens, right? That's what's in the statute. So what that means is, that what's protected under the statute is to talk about agenda, things that are on your agenda, so you want to hear from the citizens, you don't want to hear about other stuff. Or you may, I don't, I don't, some things, some places I go, I have no idea what people.
But I mean, you know, sometimes people don't know what to do, so they come talk to us, and it gets the attention of staff and, you know, council members, just because.
I, I understand, they have grievances, and they come down, and they want to tell you that they think they're being treated unfairly, or someone needs to trim a tree, or, you know, whatever thing they've got going on in their, in their mind, that they think they need to talk to you about.
Oh, I'm confused. So when you were down here on the mixed use, that was an agenda?
But there was also a meeting before that we spoke at, in the.
On the citizens appearance.
Yes.
Gotcha.
And, and it's coming and we're.
Yeah. And the twenty-minute rule was enforced, then? I'm certain it was. I don't remember that, but I'm not gonna say it wasn't.
I think we just started to limit the time because of the number of people, but I don't, I think we went over twenty minutes, but I could be wrong.
Yeah, maybe you limited the time.
I think it was, if somebody people on the list.
Yeah.
You know, I've seen this happen a two here, this item's coming up on our next agenda, it's a public hearing, you come and talk to us then, because it doesn't matter, you know, if it was then, and we've always been accommodating on these public hearings, always, everyone's always had enough time to speak.
Yeah, and, and in a public hearing, you get five minutes per speaker, uh, and up to an hour for each yea, and an hour for each nay. So you actually allocate up to two hours for each public hearing. Ramesh, did you have your hand up? You can shake your head or nod your head.
Not soon.
Okay. Don?
Well, uh, this whole discussion, I think, bringing up good points, I, I still go back to the fail safe. Instead of limiting who can speak and who can't, give everybody the opportunity, you just turn down how long they can speak, because then you really do, you still get it, you still end up.
And that's what the school board does.
Uh-huh, and I think that's a good one, because you do hear everybody, everybody gets the chance to speak, it's just.
So if we.
You'd make it reasonable, because you know there's gonna be a lot of repeat.
If we did twenty instead of fifteen, that's an hour instead of forty-five minutes, which is what the school board allows.
I think that's fine, that's sort of the fail safe that, the only reason I said match it up with them just makes it easier for citizens to.
Match it up.
I mean, just, because it's, then they know if they talk to us or them, it's sort of the same, I don't know, that, that doesn't matter really.
And you've got to remember, you know, it's, it's still a judgment, whether you adhere to that.
Yeah.
Agreed. Sixty minutes. Jim?
Yeah, but we're just talking about, we're just talking about citizens appearance, right?
Right.
Yes, right.
So.
Not public hearing.
Not public.
So, I mean, maybe we have a meeting where they all show up on the same topic, but I, I don't know, I'm, I'm good for three minutes per, however long we gotta sit there and listen to them.
I'd like to have some caliber on it.
You make, you make a good point.
Meaning just reduce the time.
You know, I, I, I don't know what they're there to talk about, and, I mean, that's what we're here for, so. But that, if, if the, if the general consensus is there's some fail safe, I mean, that, that's fine, too. But I, I'd say, why don't we just go with the three minutes per and, and just live with it for a year and revisit this, this time next year, and kind of see what the experience has been.
I could go along with that.
Yeah, me too.
Mm-hmm.
For a one year sunset.
Well, if we're gonna have to amend the ordinance.
Well, you know, keep in mind, you guys can change this anytime you want to, and I just, I, I got, quite honestly, I got what I needed out of it, I just didn't want to do the extension of time.
I'd agree.
So that was, and that was my, that was my real reason, so.
Give them everybody the same.
I'll give the text back to Bob, it'll come in, and it's gonna say something, um, presentations by individuals during citizens appearance shall be limited to three minutes each, period. Those persons signed up to speak at the citizens appearance, yada, yada. So we'll take out the twenty-one, or the twenty-minute limit, and there will be nothing in there about the number of speakers that are allowed.
And Jim, you make a good point, because this isn't a public hearing, this is citizens' appearance.
Yeah.
All right.
Right.
Okay, cool.
All right, thank you very much, appreciate, appreciate the, the discussion.
Look at us, see, we're a good headspace for this.
Yes, we were, didn't, no one bit either anybody's head off. Item B, Mr. Steer.
Thank you for standing right, Mr. Steer.
Yeah.
Uh, my pleasure. Mayor, uh, council, good evening. This is item number B on your agenda, it's discussion regarding ordinance updates, chapter twelve, section thirty-one, three, off-street loading space, all districts, section thirty-one, six, parking requirements based on use, section twelve, thirty-one, seven, rules for computing number of parking spaces, and section twelve, twenty-nine, six, non-conformant signs. So the purpose of these amendments to the zoning ordinance are to incorporate items discussed during the industrial two-point-oh and retail roundtables that the city performed in fiscal year twenty-three. This will allow for more flexibility in parking requirements for industrial and retail users, and the modification to the city requirements related to non-conformant monument signage could potentially improve the aesthetics of outdated signage along our major corridors. Because these proposed changes are city and.
Because these proposed changes are city-initiated, we wanted to brief you on these concepts to get your feedback and consent on bringing these forward. These are all changes to the zoning ordinance, and per state law, will require a public hearing at the planning and zoning commission on October seventeenth and city council on November twelfth, and then newspaper notice will be published at, at least fifteen days in advance of the council meeting. The first is to allow for the conversion of the dock areas to vehicular parking within an existing office warehouse site, provided the area is screened from view. Currently, a conversion of dock areas to car parking would necessitate a minor site plan amendment and would need the approval of the director of community development. With this amendment, the change would be allowed by right and could be done at the time of building permit. The amendment would allow more flexibility for reconfiguration of the site to accommodate more vehicles for a change in tenant or operations of an existing site, or, or the operations of an existing tenant, and the space could easily be converted back if that user changes. This is not a drop-off pickup area for children, but rather an area that's used for shipping of goods within a warehouse distribution site. Okay, so Matt, thank you for reading it, now, point to that one and show us what you were just talking about. Okay, so, so what we have is, is, this is the existing warehouse that was just built on the southwest corner of Chalk Belt Line and Southwestern, and what they're proposing, if this changed, or this is a conceptual proposal, they would convert that dock area that's for shipping and, and loading and unloading of goods within the back of their warehouse to car parks, so that's essentially, you know, thirty, thirty parking spaces for the, for a different tenant to go in that building, a more intense tenant. So we've seen this throughout the, the industrial park, throughout the years, they do convert them, and so this allows for them to be able to do it without seeking a minor site plan amendment and without the director of community development signing off on it, provided they screen the area with evergreen screening, that's the, the extra added screening here, probably no E.R. Stevens. So, I'm going to try to put this in English, I can understand, the fact that we require them to specifically say what that space is going to be used for, and now they want to change it to parking, requires us to change our.
Yeah, we have this lot of, we have warehouse distribution, you know what I'm saying? Some of it's being converted to data centers and some other things, they don't need the docks anymore, but they need the parking with the intensity of the use, so they're converting the shipping area into employee parking to get the parking numbers up to accommodate an office use.
But our code currently doesn't allow them to do that unless they come back to us for approval.
We have to go through the formal site plan, it's forty-five to sixty-day process to go through that because of the notices, and we're trying to accommodate our.
Actually, actually, it's a minor site plan amendment, which we do administratively, we're just easing up on that and doing it through the building improvement process rather than doing it a minor site plan amendment.
Thank you, I did, I, Don? Why does it have to be screened, what, what's the, what's that topic?
Just more, more intense amount of cars in there, typically with a parking lot area, we require it to have landscape islands at the end of each parking room, so this would exempt them from our interior parking lot landscaping requirements.
So it'd give us something somewhat similar to the regular parking spaces, right?
And then, then plus, plus these are easily converted back to dock areas, you know.
Do docks have to be screened?
They, they do have to be screened with a wing wall, but not quite as intense as what we're requiring.
That's what these are, is those ring walls for the dock.
I'm sorry, I thought you.
I'm good, I'm good.
Okay, any other questions on this aisle?
No, thank you.
The second is a minor text amendment to the zoning ordinance to address the current requirement for warehouse distribution centers. The proposed change is decrease the minimum parking required from one parking space per one thousand square feet to one parking space per two thousand square feet, while ensuring the number of employees on a maximum working shift each have a parking space. Although the comparison city research showed a range of required parking from one to a thousand, to one to two thousand, from one per employee to one per four employees, staff feels comfortable in recommending the adjustment to this minimum standard. The text amendment would also include some verbiage, minor changes where we say warehouse slash distribution instead of just warehouse, and that would be more consistent with the special definitions section. And what, what staff's observed is the larger the warehouse, the emptier the, the parking areas there.
Well, a lot of it's also caused by greater use of automation inside the warehouse, right? They don't have as many employees as they could have.
And the warehouse and more automation they're going to have. Don?
And just to clarify, so it's one per, what'd you say, one per thousand?
One per, one per two thousand is what we're recommending.
Uh, one per two thousand, but, or a minimum of their maximum staff.
Right, so, so it's one parking space.
Those words didn't make sense.
Absolutely, yes, sir.
That actually would supersede the one per two thousand, right? They got to have enough spaces for the big shift, okay.
So, is this, is, are these, is this request, this particular one, is this coming from any of our current clients, or is it just something you guys have noticed? This is the industry standard now, so we've had, we had the industrial two-point-oh roundtable, and this is what they, what the roundtable.
Okay, thank you, I'm good.
Sounds good. Okay, so the next one, the third text amendment was a result of a retail roundtable held with retail developers to discuss the future trends in retail. During the roundtable, the parking requirements for retail centers was brought up. Parking requirements of the zoning ordinance are based on extreme cases. During peak times, often there's a large amount of parking that's never utilized except for during the holidays. The director of community development is proposed to be authorized, but not obligated to grant a five percent reduction in parking for retail centers that are greater than ten thousand square feet in building area. Anything greater than five, than five percent would need a parking study and an alternate parking plan prepared by a landscape transportation engineer. Greater flexibility in administering the parking requirements allows for more potential businesses to fill the retail centers. The reason for the ten thousand square foot threshold, oh, apologize, thank you. The reason for the ten thousand square foot threshold is related to the number of tenants. Anything under ten thousand square feet would have fewer tenants and less parking wiggle room. Any questions on this one? Mark?
I do have a question, you'd be authorized but not obligated, so you're making a judgment call, and how, what is the basement of that judge, basis of the, the judgment call?
Well, so if I, if I could answer it. So, so five percent would, would be a minor, minor change, and most likely, we would, we would sign off on that. But if there's other factors involved, like just, just witnessing over-parking of it, or an under-parking within an area, Mindy would have the right to say, no, I'm not comfortable with, with this five percent, I'm going to go ahead and send it through the process for, for your amendment.
Matt, you and I talked about this, Michelle, and one of the things is, business models change, so with more like takeouts for food, and they don't, they need that quick spot, but they don't need all this extra parking, or handicap parking has to be added, and now they're short the regular parking spaces, and we wanted to have the ability to help our businesses by making some minor tweaks, that's all really that, that Matt explained to me that he wanted to do with that, so, it was kind of the business model changed, and as you well know, use all the, like in the strip mall situation, if you get like everything but one use, because of the parking requirements, you can't put a restaurant, say a little restaurant, or a, a takeout place wants to go there, and we can't accommodate because of parking, but they're only open in the morning and the afternoon, and that'd be, and, you know, most of our citizens of Love Town go work, made sense to try to accommodate that business, and we couldn't, it's that kind of thing.
Exactly, and so it's for the last tenant that's basically going in the center.
In the shopping centers, we've got the ability, it makes them adjust, mine very much.
My concern is the perception, if you're, if you give it to one shopping center and not the other, if you're not obligated to give the reduction.
Right, and we, we could remove that from, from our proposal, I took it from Farmer's Ranch, that's how they, how they had it worded, but.
I mean, and from a legal standpoint, would, would we.
Well, if you're arguing about it, or not even handed, and that kind of thing.
That's my concern.
And give it to the, not give it to the Inclees, but to give it to someone else.
Yeah.
Kevin?
I was going to say, did we do something like this, I think it was with the, the firehouse, so, did we do something with their parking, like, because the Braywood Center had like some limited parking, I mean, we kind of did this, but it came through council. So basically, it's just, I, I do have concern about like, it's the, I share Mark's concern with that, like, what's the trigger? You know, like, what causes that, is that a, a mix of the, you know, of the tenants of the shopping center, or, I mean, is it just?
Yeah, sometimes it's just that last unit gets in, and so because of the rest of the units in that shopping center have parking requirements based on that use, they use up all the parking, and so they're short a space. Or they have to add a handicap space, and that kind of thing, and then they lose a parking spot. We were just looking for a way of trying to accommodate that for the business community, but if you think it's raw with danger, then we can go back to, I just need to drag someone through the zoning process for a single.
Just give it to them.
Breon?
Then maybe it's the wording, maybe it's more of director of community development has a discretion to approve parking, parking that's reduced by five, by five percent.
Well, it shouldn't be arbitrary, we should start to be a standard, that's.
Right, I just, I just don't like that is authorized, not obligated to approve, because.
So if you took out the not obligated?
The not oblig, like, the wording is, and I don't, I'm just, I'm not trying to wordsmith it, but I just, there's something that doesn't seem.
We only got one, two, three, one, three.
Be an issue with it, well, but kind of to Mark's point, right, I think it's more of, kind of like Mike has a discretion to do certain things and other things come to council, I think in this particular situation, Mindy has a discretion of doing it if it's one spot, right? And not having to go through the process.
Well, it's always in five percent, so it's usually one or two spots, in most cases.
Yeah, so, so for centers that are ten thousand square feet, it would be two-point-five parking spaces that she would have the ability to sign off on, yeah.
Is, is really the intent just to kind of like, just get that across the finish line without as much red tape?
Absolutely.
Do it.
Absolutely, yeah, and we can remove, not obligated, we can remove that from the. Don?
Yeah.
And we can use the word, say, based on legitimate business need.
I don't.
Give, give some standard to it, so it's not, to Mark, if I give it to, to Matt, you don't give it to Lou A., and, you know, or am I discriminating against Lou A. in favor of Matt, and we don't want that either. But as long as it's legitimate business reason, that they need it, we'll get to it.
Well, so, yeah, you bring a good point, you know, if we give it to a restaurant rather than a vape shop, you know.
That'd be a good judgment.
That would be a judgment, that would be a judgment.
It would be, it would be gotten favorably by some people.
I, so.
So I'm not the lawyer, but it really is just a minor, it's just cushion, slight flexibility, right? That's really a little over-accomplished here, I, I don't know that it's, I hear what, I hear what y'all are saying about being cautious about who gets it and who doesn't, but it's really just sort of a margin, a de minimis margin, I think, so. I guess I feel okay with it.
It's usually caused by, it's not a self-imposed problem, you know? When, when I want to buy or rent this space, I can't help who else is in the shopping center and thinking about parking, and so. Matt and I thought that we'd bring this to you as a way to relieve that without having to make someone go through a huge zoning process.
You.
So, so far we have not denied anybody with existing rule we have in place, correct?
Um, we have had proposals say, I want to go in there, and then we've said, you don't have enough parking, you'll have to go through the P.D. process and ask for a variance.
Okay, so you have done that, okay.
Yeah.
I'm okay with this change.
So that we make it move to the entire zoning process.
I, I'm okay with it, but I think I would reword the authorized, not obligated, it's just a little awkward.
It's very awkward.
Okay, sounds good. The next, next item is, during the retail roundtable, it was the consensus that there, the handful of current non-conforming freestanding signs are most likely not going to ever be removed and brought into conformance unless destroyed by a natural disaster. Because these signs were built prior to the current ordinance, they're typically larger in size and greater in height than what the current ordinance permits, so they're considered legal non-conforming. If they could be rebuilt to the same height and width that they're current, that they are currently, then the owners of the centers would consider rebuilding these signs to be more architecturally compatible with the centers and would be more uniform with the existing signage along city roads. So staff's recommending the following verbiage be introduced to the non-conforming signage section. If the freestanding sign was built prior to nineteen ninety, and the sign's not considered a pole sign, then the sign can be rebuilt in the same location with the same height and width, provided it's architecturally compatible with the main structure on the site. Any questions on this one?
But, isn't that just a Realtor's sign over there on the right?
Oh, no, no, that's not.
It's the base of the sign.
I think that's Mark's, Mark's side, isn't it?
That's a, the Woodside Village.
It's a multi-tenant sign.
There's a name on there.
Mark?
Ah, that one, okay.
These are the bands.
Yeah, gotcha, gotcha, okay.
So, so that's, that's too tall to meet today's ordinance, plus it doesn't have the masonry base, and so.
Right, on the left, you mean?
This one, this one doesn't, it's, doesn't have a masonry base either, we couldn't build this back, it's too high, it's, doesn't have the masonry base, and so, it's got the multi, and so we thought, Matt, not my thought, Matt's thought, was really, if we allow them to make it nicer, it's aesthetically more pleasing, they still get their multi-tenant, it's, okay, we've lived with it for this long, it's giving those older shopping centers a break to freshen up their shopping center without doing violence to the zoning ordinance.
So, yeah, part of the retail roundtable, we, we met with Michael Hirschman, which was the Braywood Center, and he stated that, you know, the reason why his sign looks the way it does is because it's legal non-conforming, he's just going to slide the tenant names in and out, and so, you know.
If I could build it back at the same height and configuration, I would upgrade the, the runners for the, so it would look nicer, which ultimately is what we want here.
So I'm all for this, especially getting rid of the ugly, when you say architecturally compatible, I think you're getting towards materials, can we still control that with the?
As long as the owner wants to do it, sure, if he pushes back, no, but we'll write the regulation to request that it be compatible with the architectural features of the main building. You're, you're getting close, I hear what you're saying.
Yeah, I'm just.
I, I know you're an architect.
Well, so, so this is a structure, not the main building, right?
Yeah, so it's technically not the main building, so.
But I, I thought the way that was written, that it didn't necessarily just apply to buildings, it applies to structures.
It says, it says commercial buildings, not says commercial buildings, because industrial buildings doesn't apply, at least arguably, but.
Okay, as long as we're not going to get in trouble.
We're not going to get in trouble, but sometimes people suggest, people will do the right thing if they're just not, sometimes instead of using a stick and beating them over the head, so that's what we do.
Ramesh?
Thank you, Mayor. Matt, I, I understand the precedent concept of what you're recommending, so if a sign was built before nineteen ninety, so it's legal and non-conforming right now, if we allow them to make this change, they could stay there for next thirty-five years. to make this change, they could stay there for next 35 years in the legal non-conforming state? And is that, is it what we want for the city?
That's what the current ordinance is, and so we're recommending that we don't want that for the city.
Well, Matt, I think when I read this, my understanding was, we are letting them be in that non-conforming stage, the only thing is that we are, they were asking them to make changes that are architecturally compatible, right?
Correct, yes, sir.
So, so their height and the width, which is non-conforming, we are letting them be non-conforming for the next 35 years, correct?
We're, we're legalizing that, so it would no longer be non-conforming.
But, Mesh, they, they can maintain the current sign forever if it's non-conforming. What we want them is to make it better and improve it, and cut them a break so it looks better, instead of them maintaining this eyesore.
I, I, I understand that, I, I understand part, but if I'm reading this correctly, one of the non-conforming aspects is the height and the width. And, and we are saying with this new change, that if they replace it, they can continue to be non-conforming with height and width for the next 35 years, or how, how much ever that sign lasts.
So, yeah, I understand, I understand what you're saying, is that they would continue to be non-conforming, but what, what this ordinance, what we're proposing, is that though, they would no longer be considered non-conforming because they brought it up to the architecturally standards, and, and so is that, is that?
He's not, what he is kind of missing is, they can't tear it down and build it back, because if they tear it down, they lose their non-conformity, and we want them to tear it down and put up something nicer, and we're gonna allow them to benefit of do that.
So, so what his question, what his question is, is, is this sign still gonna be considered non-conforming?
Yes.
After they, after they redo the architecture and make it look all nice, is it still gonna be considered non-conforming? Or is that, is that gonna legalize it and make it conforming? So that's a legal question.
Well, if you write the ordinance that way, then yes, it'll be conforming at that point.
And Bob?
One final follow-up, so if it becomes conforming, in the future, any new signs will be allowed to be of that height and width then?
No, no.
Because of the 1990?
It's the 1990 thing, but we'd have to write it that way, they're still legal non-conforming use, because it's still too tall, they're still too wide, we just let them, this, kind of right now, this is a one-time deal. They're getting, they're getting a new lease on life, because they get something that's more visually appealing, but they're protecting their non-conforming rights, because otherwise, they'll never tear it down, they'll, it'll look as hideous 35 years from now as it looks today, and we wanted to make it look better.
Yeah, I, I just want a clarification, are we forcing business to spend more money?
No.
No, sir. This is to.
This is an option.
Help them.
It's an option for them, they can choose to do it, but they can stay the way it is today for next 35 years.
Yeah, but I think it sounds like some of them want to do it, but they're afraid that if they change the sign enough, then it'll become an illegal non-conforming, it'll become a new sign, and then it'll be non-conforming and illegal. So they're not doing anything to it for fear that it would change enough of it that it would become illegal, non-conforming, which point, then they'd have, they'd lose their big sign.
The best example is the one on the left, they've got a nice, big, large sign that they don't wanna give, give up the footprint on it.
Three Max?
Yeah, they don't wanna give up the footprint on it, but we would like them to make it look better. Well, they can't make it look better unless they, under the current rules, under, unless they made it conform to our existing sign ordinance, which they don't wanna do.
They'd have to tear it down. Once they tear it down, they lose their non-conforming, and I gotta put it.
So what we're allowing them to do is to use that footprint and make it look a lot better.
Okay, so do I grant you an example here? They can remove that wood post on the left and right and do something else?
Yes.
Yeah.
As long as it's, this, and that footprint be used, they can spruce it up so it matches, it's more compatible, they have nicer backwood signage, so it looks better, and they don't lose that non-conforming right.
I'm okay with that.
I guess that's after, what, 35 years of non-conformance, we're finally figuring out that they probably aren't gonna change.
Well, when they built it, it was conforming. When we changed the ordinance in 1990, we couldn't do those.
That was 34 years ago, so.
I understand, I was here.
Don?
Yeah, I was.
So if, if they rebuild the sign, is it still grandfathered in if an act of God knocks it over or something? Or the next time they, the date, the date is no longer?
The height's still non-conforming, the width's still non-conforming.
But it's no longer a sign built in 1990, it's now, you've got a refreshed date of 2024, so, does that mean? So does that mean if it, if they rebuild it, that it has to once again conform with?
If it's more than 50% destroyed by an act of God, then they have to put up a sign that conforms to the current ordinance. They lose their non-conforming.
I was just curious if it resets the clock by having that 1990. I mean, they're still, they're still not grandfathered in though, right? It's a, it's a sign built in 2024, right?
It's non-conforming, with a wink and a nod, we're allowing them to do more than just maintaining it. It's still height, if you, if you were to come in with town tomorrow and build a shopping center, you could not put that sign.
Right.
If an act of God knocked that down, they wouldn't be able to replace it.
Okay, so that, that's a fair point, but, but does that mean once that sign gets, the new sign gets to be 35 years old, or they're grandfathered in, and can refresh it? Because that sign wasn't built in 1990, that's, that is my point.
I should be so lucky, if I'm here, I'd be worried about it, but it's still non-conforming. They would still have to, we would still have to, we might have to treat the ordinance again to allow them to, to rebuild it again.
Okay, someone else up the road.
Right. Kevin?
All right, I apologize, I wanted to ask this question. The sign on the far right and the sign in the middle are a little bit more low-profile than the sign on the far left. I get kind of grandfather, you know, like, yeah, I'm not naming any names, I'm just going sign in the middle and then sign on the right. So like, those are, even though they're non-conforming, they are a little bit more low-profile, if you will. The one on the far left is far outside the scope of anything else that we have, is, do we even have another example of a sign like that on the left?
Uh, this was really the largest one that, that I could find, besides the pole signs, which we've already excluded from this exception. So we, we could limit the height of, of the change if, if you guys want us to go down that, down this road.
Those are, those supports are, are those made out of wood on the left?
I think it's metal.
Is it metal?
It's either metal or some kind of fiber.
Okay.
It's not, it's plastic now.
If you limit it, and they, they may just leave it like an.
Yeah, that's the thing, is like, that's what I'm struggling with, is like, that sign is just so big compared to the, the other ones, it's, I don't even have as much of a problem with the, the ones on the right, you know, the one in the middle and the one on the right, it's just that big one, so, pretty much, we have to do, like, if.
It's kind of.
We have to paint it with one big brush stroke, right, to be able to cover all this, or?
It's a trade-off, to get a nicer looking sign.
I know, I know, I love businesses, so, okay.
The good news for this is half the sign's blocked by the tree.
Well, that is correct, so it's serving a great purpose there.
Well, they'll refurbish it, make it look nice, and cut the tree down.
Okay, so my last slide here is, so, so again, the, the purpose of these amendments to the zoning ordinance are to incorporate the concepts discussed during the industrial 2.0 roundtable and the retail roundtables that the city performed in FY 2023. These will allow for more flexibility in parking requirements and modification of city requirements related to non-conforming monument signage. These will potentially improve the aesthetics along the outdated signage along our major quarters. Because these proposed changes are city-initiated, we wanted to brief you on these concepts, get your feedback and consent on bringing these forward. These are all changes to the zoning ordinance, which per state law, will require a public hearing at the Planning and Zoning Commission on October 17th, and City Council on November 12th, and the newspaper notice will be published at least 15 days in advance of the City Council meeting. We will reach out to the stakeholders that were involved in the roundtables, if given permission to bring these forward. And that concludes my, my presentation, I think I've answered the questions throughout, so.
Beautifully.
If there's any additional questions.
I'm glad you did, I think it's a good idea.
Thanks.
Would not have preferred to be do it. Would not have preferred to be do it.
No, it's, it's a good proactive thing to do, I think.
Anybody have anything else? I, we need to go back out and close out the meeting, I do have a public announcement that I've forgotten to bring forth, so I will do that before we close out. The time is 10:31, and we have the end of work session, we will move into the council chambers for the end of the regular session. service announcement, and that was that Dr. Brad Hunt announced on Sunday the passing of a former CISD teacher, Diana Rains. She was also a member of the Cappella City Council from 1998 to 2005, serving as Mayor Pro Tem in 2005 as well. Funeral arrangements are pending at this time, we'll keep her family in our prayers. There being no further action before this council, we are adjourned at 10:33.